No, that doesn't help. All right, so I will declare a quorum. All the commissioners are here. The only person we're missing is our county attorney. He'll probably be in here shortly. So I will declare a quorum under item number one. Item number two is our prayer, and I'll call on Dave Fair to do that for us.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good to see everybody. I come up here to pray on Mondays for you. But during the week, every day, I pray for you. Because God just might open up money. He's there when we need Him. And so be sure that you have myself and others that are praying for you. That's great. Father, we come to You, Lord, in Jesus' name. And I would bow to You, Lord, each of these commissioners, other elected and appointed officials, Lord. The population of our county, Father, we lift all of these people up to You. Father, for this COVID-19, Father, we pray that it will not come up near us. There's a scripture that says, "A thousand may fall at your right and ten thousand may fall at your right hand, but it will not come near you." So, Father, I pray that protection over assault. Father, we give our commissioners and others wisdom and guidance as they go about the business of Brown County. And may the Lord bless you and keep you and cross His face to shine upon you and give you peace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, David.
Yes, sir.
Item number three is citizens' comments. I don't have anyone that has signed up to speak under this particular item. However, I want to remind you that now under state law, any person can now speak on any item on the agenda. However, you now have to, you have to come. So we kept, I guess, out of tradition, they still listed in citizens' comments, but they have now, there's a statute now that said that we have to allow anyone to speak on any item. So, but I would prefer, again, if you sign up so that we know who you're going to speak.
But they also, Judge, they also have to fill out that form to speak.
Right, right, that's what I just said. Yeah, they're going to, they need to sign up.
You ask them to. In that statute, it says they also have to fill out that form. They can't just stand up and start speaking.
Wisdom from Commissioner Wardley. All right, item number four is consideration and approval for minutes of May 4, 2020. So I'll open the floor for considerations. I got mine electronically. I don't have mine both ways. Well, I was like, motion that we're through the minutes that presented for the previous meeting, which was the... Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Sharon? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Passes unanimously. Again, I know nobody wants to stay in a crowded room any longer than they have to, so I'm trying to move quickly. Item number five is consideration and approval of any treasurer or auditor's report.
We do have an auditor's, uh, I believe it's my previous report. It's treasurer and auditors' affidavit. Commissioners Court states that requirements of subsection C of section 114.026 of the Texas Local Government Code have been met. The treasurer and auditor have submitted a report to the Commissioners Court for April 30, 2020. The court has compared and examined the report and has approved it in minutes. Attached to this affidavit is a true and correct copy of the report, including a report of cash and other assets from just yet accounted treasurer at the time of our examination, an amount of eighteen million, eight hundred fifty thousand, eighteen dollars, sixty-one cents. This approved by the Commissioners. The report is in front of you. Title Treasurer and Auditor's Report for April 2020. I move we approve the treasurer and auditor's report for April 2020.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. The only thing I'll add is I know that T is working. I want to thank both departments. You always do a fantastic job. So any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimously. Do you have anything else you want to add, Sharon? On that one. All right, item number six is consideration and approval of payments of any bills as needed. So you have the bills in front of you. Say that again, ma'am? Okay, the ones up for discussion.
So we may need to pass on the bills for a little bit.
Okay, we could pass, it gives you a chance to look over them as well. So we'll come back to item number six. So we'll go to item number seven is our consent agenda. Item number seven A, consideration and approval of appointment to fill three vacant seats on the hospital authority. So, as you know, I didn't, in the... So Keith Clark, Robert Porter, and Paul Waldrup, seats on the hospital authority is top for reappointment or for new appointment. I believe we, I've received some, some interest in people who would, in the community who would like to serve on that. So if you don't mind, I'll tell each of them they can speak for a minimum or a maximum of three minutes each. So Keith, you're already on the board. Would you like to come up and say a few words and tell us why you'd like to stay on the board? By the way, we thank you for the, the business experience and all that you bring to the board.
Just all right?
Microphone's right there, but as long as we can hear you. So this is Keith Clark, the current member of the hospital authority. Go ahead, Keith.
I've been on board quite some times, so the treasurer, uh, the board sometimes goes for many years without a lot of activities. But what, a lot of them don't understand, though, the hospital authority board owns the building up there. And then, uh, the, whatever group that owns it, there's been a couple since I've been on the board, and there's about to be a third, it looks like, uh, they pay a certain amount of rent. And it's a huge amount of money, I forget the numbers. But most of that is paid through their, their putting back into the hospital. And so the, so the hospital, that's the way they pay most of the bills, new equipment and upkeep and stuff like that. And then there is a, an amount of money, it seems like it's forty, fifty thousand, I forget now, it's a long, but, uh, that, that we actually get the cash. So the hospital authority board has a substantial amount of cash. And you might ask, why? Well, it's the hospital authority board's responsibility to make sure that, that everything's legal with the, the leasing hospital. And if we ever have a problem, we've got money aside to, to protect, to, if we need a higher legal counsel. And we have from time to time, higher legal counsel to investigate, uh, and look at our situation. And so consequently, it's a, uh, it's an important board, and I, I like the idea to be able to watch this. And now we're about to go through a transition, uh, to the, it looks like the Henry Costas when we're buying. And so consequently, I, I'd sure like to keep, continue in this ring just to have the experience on. And now the county appoints so many, and the city appoints so many to his board. And so I'm appointed by, I have got appointed by.
I think everybody knows, but you've got about a minute left. Give us, give us a real quick rundown of your, your business experience, all so everyone knows.
Well, I just retired last year, fifteen years ago. I served on the board of Citizens National Bank and actually Secretary of the Board.
You're also speaking to people watching live stream, is why I'm saying, not all of them know that.
I'm, I'm going to get moody since I did. And so, uh, and then I've been involved, I'm president of the Chamber of Commerce and a number of other things around town. And because, and I do that because I have a true interest in my career and everything. I moved here thirty something years ago, and this is my home, my life.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, Keith. And I hadn't seen you since you retired. Again, congratulations.
I didn't realize you'd retired.
Yeah.
Well, I've got a new replacement since then.
All right, Mrs. Huesman, you want to come up? Uh, she's also, this is, uh, Ms. Huesman, she's a registered nurse with, uh, many, many years' experience. I'll let her tell you exactly that. And she is also interested in serving on the hospital board.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes, ma'am.
Thanks, ma'am. My name is Kimberly Regina Hughes, I'm going to go by Regina. I have over twenty-three years' experience in the nursing profession. Been in a variety of healthcare settings. And just a little bit about myself, I earned my Bachelor's of Science in Nursing in ninety-six at McNeese State University in Lake Charles, Louisiana. Got my Master's of Science in Nursing Education in two thousand and eighteen at the Excelsior College at Albany, New York. Completed my mentorship here locally at Ranger College, uh, School of Nursing. Currently, I'm applying to begin my doctorate. My professional experience, I've got about fourteen years in various emergency departments throughout Southern Louisiana, Texas, mostly trauma, Little Two, Little Three staff, charge nurse. I did, uh, two years as a pit nurse, nurse educator in operational medicine with the Department of Defense. I worked three years in home hospice here in Brownwood as a nurse case manager. Currently, I work, uh, I've been, for the last four years, been doing rehab nursing at a physical rehab up in Abilene. In the past, I've served as a charter, on a charter committee for sexual assault, sexual assault nurse examiner program back in Louisiana that covered a three parish area. Did that for about two years. Some of the experience that I have, I've worked with a variety of electronic health record systems, or EHLRs, at the various facilities. Collaborated directly with in-house paramedics, uh, units at Fort Hood, uh, as well as, we had an onsite there EMS when I worked in Sherman. So we collaborated directly with them on transporting patients. Developed, implemented performance improvement projects, as well as written standard operating procedures. I'm familiar with the C-Burney, if you know what that is, chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosive preparedness. Participated in disaster drills at every facility I've ever worked at. Also survivor of the mass shooting at Fort Hood. So there's a lot of, uh, a lot of things I can contribute from that aspect. I believe you all should have a copy of my CD. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, I just kind of wanted to give you a little background of myself.
I, I, I have to say, you understand this as volunteer, right?
Yes, 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 yes.
Because we couldn't afford someone like you. Anyone have any questions for Regina?
Now, once again, we're filling how many places?
Three spots.
Three spots, and who's going off?
Keith has asked to stay. Well, I think they've all offered to stay again, but Keith really wants to stay to the point that he came and talked to me. Uh, Robert Porter and Paul Waldrup. Thank you, ma'am.
And I have several facilities that I've worked at where we transitioned from, you know, one company to another, so.
Well, it's about to happen here, so.
Yes, yes. So I have been through that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Y'all can't see what I'm bringing, they're laughing at me.
Yes. Appreciate it, God bless.
And lastly, our very own, you all know him quite well, Doctor Dave Fair would like to speak for three minutes. So he used to be on the board and would like to go back, uh, and serve again. Dave, come on.
I don't know if I can speak for a minute.
You don't have to, it's just up to two, three minutes. You have his resume as well.
Right, for those that are on television and don't know me, I'm Dave Fair, a fifty-plus year resident of Brown County, served on the City Council for almost twenty-five years in Brown County Council. I have a couple of doctorates, I have a PhD in pastoral counseling and psychology, and then a doctorate in clinical pastoral counseling. Business background, I managed rotacast plastic products, which became RMI out there. I managed them for almost thirty years. And we were a rotor molder of thermoplastics and sold all over the world, and I had sixty, somebody close that I was responsible for. As far as the hospital goes, I can remember when they broke ground, I think it was in the sixties, to build that hospital. And I have watched it ebb and flow and come and go, uh, over the years. But they have, have tried as best they could with what they had to work with. They have tried to be a first-class hospital. Why do I want to serve? If you've got my CD there, you're going to say this man's lost it, because I have served over the years in ten, twelve plus different boards that I've served on. Because I have been blessed to have some knowledge in various areas, and I want to be able to use that, uh, to the best I can. And the fact that I can volunteer, I like, because, uh, it, uh, you know, it just makes it that much more rewarding to me that I can give that, that I can give that time. One of the key reasons that I would like to serve on the board of Brownwood Regional Medical Center is I really believe someone from the clergy, someone, uh, if it's a minister, chaplain, clergy, whatever you want to put it, I believe someone needs to represent the clergy and the parishers in the community. I served as, uh, chaplain for the hospital over several different occasions for almost thirty years, most of that time in the emergency room. I served as a hostess chaplain. I was director of chaplaincy for the state guard, assigned to one eleven engineering battalion, and worked closely with the medical community. You know me, I've been here, I want to serve. I think that I would represent you well by being able to serve on the hospital board.
Thank you, David. Tell me how many years you've served before, I have no idea, I just knew you were on.
I served about six months, I guess it was.
Oh, sure.
I was, I served at an expired term.
Any questions for David?
No question, you know Dave.
We know Dave well, he blesses us every Monday. Glad that you're able to leave your house now and come back to the...
I am too, after six weeks between my wife and a bunch of cats.
Uh-oh. All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, here you go. I, I am in big trouble, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, gentlemen and ladies. I appreciate it. Any, any other questions? Thank you so much.
I just have one comment, I've never been, I've never seen anybody, I've never seen competition for position on one of these boards. I've never, I've never had that happen in my public collection.
I've got a question, like, we know Keith won't do, it's Paul and Robert.
They agreed to serve again if you appoint.
Okay, we just got three hopes, right?
Right.
Okay.
So. Well, three is the counting point, yes.
Yes, I understand, that's our three. And these people are very well qualified and would do, serve a good job, and these people that have been on it and are willing to serve again, I don't see anyone wanting to kick them off, so to speak. With our good folks too, you know.
They are, right, they are.
Or else we could split these two on with them.
I know all of them. Uh, I do think, uh, I was delighted to learn that we had some other people that liked to serve. I think it ought, I think it ought to rotate, and I think we definitely should have somebody from the metal, medical community on the board. And Keith, as I, as I began to tell you how much I appreciate the wisdom and experience you bring, uh, from, from, uh, the business background, especially with what we're about to go into, uh, perhaps the largest transition that we've had, even though we've had many over the years, this one's going to be a, this one's going to be a big one.
Well, will this, will this transition happen before the, I mean, these, these board members, when do they go off, when do they go on?
Uh, when, I'm not sure when the term expires out, I think, I need to hit it real quick.
End of the month.
End of this month.
So when's, when's the, when's the transaction, is it ongoing with, with Abilene?
They just say, they just said this fall, they have finalized today, before the end of the year, absolutely.
Are these, uh, current board members, are they all pretty much involved in this process already? I mean, that's, that would be my concern, is we got some that are already up to speed with what's going on, or?
Go ahead, Keith.
Well, the, uh, the transaction, one of the things I failed to mention is there is a hospital board. They run the hospital. This is the hospital authority board that owns the property.
It's a little confusing.
And, and so the hospital authority board will meet, uh, I believe we're going to meet next week with, with the folks from Henry's. We have a meeting executed a week from tomorrow, and, uh...
That'll be your first since this, since their announcement that they're...
So we're involved in that, but it was initiated through the hospital board.
Well, okay, my concern, once again, is if someone that's already in the middle of the, kind of going through the negotiations all here, what, what part they play, I don't, I'll just...
Well, not long ago.
I've had a concern about disrupting somebody that's already in the middle of the process, that would be my only concern.
Well, the process, yeah, I understand, I would be, the process hasn't started yet, just for the record. But that is certainly my only concern if it happened, it has not. I speak with Jace every week, and the CEO, and it has not started yet. As a matter of fact, they're not allowed to talk publicly other than the news release they gave, because the attorney's had even finished inking the, uh, the actual transition for it to begin, so. Uh, I know we've got lots of things to do, I don't want to take up too much time. Uh, so I'll make the motion, I don't know if I'll get a second or not, but I would like to keep Keith on the board. And then, uh, so Keith Clark, and then Rettina Huesman, and Dave, I would mind you serving again, uh, representing the chaplain, or really represent the county, but I'm saying with your interest in, in the chaplain's service, I think that would be fantastic. So I'll make a motion that those three be appointed for the next term, uh, and we'll leave it to, to y'all. I appreciate you taking the time to come in person and talk to us, that speaks volumes. Some of the people watching on camera, they appreciate that as well, I'm sure.
Like I said, we're having to pick three positions out of five people. I've never done that in one item, one day, one board at one time. It's kind of, and my concern, you heard my one concern, is my other concern is, if you're saying it is wrong, partially maybe, partially I'm going to go in there and awareness going on, so I don't know the answer to this.
This board, our hospital authority board hasn't even met yet since the, that announcement was made, so they're not involved. They will be, this fall, limited, limited, obviously, because of their role, but they will be later in the fall.
I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer, I haven't really, I haven't really had time to think about this yet.
Well, unfortunately, we can't, because they just notified us a week ago that they needed this by today, uh, so there's not more time for us to consider it. Yes, ma'am.
We will have one more meeting before they meet. We could table this till next Monday.
Is all, that'll give them enough time. Is that great? Okay, so we can do that as well. I've made a motion, so I don't guess anybody's going to second it.
I mean, I don't. I don't know what y'all are thinking. I don't, I don't know what the process is, so I'm just going to make three, we're going through, you're going to throw three out there and ask for a second, I don't know if you put that or if there's a nomination process, I don't know.
I can amend it to, uh, where we...
I don't understand exactly how proper procedure, I don't know.
Well, we just have to appoint three, we can do it all together, we can do it individually, it doesn't matter. I want to thank, again, thank those who took the time to come in person and speak to us. So you all want to table it for a week and think about it, I mean, it's entirely up to you. Okay, well, apparently my motion's going to fail, which I fully expected it to do. So, uh, I'm listening to anybody else.
Judge, I move that we appoint, uh, Robert Porter, Paul Waldrup, and Keith Clark back on the hospital board.
Basically, we have a motion and a second for discussion. Keith, uh, I fully support you, so, but I'm going to be voting no, but that has nothing to do with you. So, uh, and everybody out in camera land watching, you understand also that has nothing to do with Keith, he's a fine man.
And so are these other two people, I want you to know that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, exactly, we've had, we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, uh, so all in favor? All opposed? I oppose.
I'm going to abstain, because I wasn't ready to go into this.
Okay, well, so we got it through now. It doesn't matter if it's three, two, simply reappoint the people who are already on there. All right.
Appreciate you, Dave.
Okay, item number seven B is a consideration and approval posting notice for, uh, regular court meetings for two thousand and twenty, that's anybody who wants to, needs to speak to us, go ahead.
As we discussed earlier in the year, um, State Bill Two changed many, many things with regards to budget process. One of the things it did, it changed definitions of voter approval rate and revenue rate, and the way those are calculated have been changed as well. And frankly, the math is way over my head. One thing I do know is that the, the tax rate cannot be calculated before August 1st. And it's, and part of it depends on the actual rate, part of it depends on the total amount on the tax rolls, and part of it, as far as I can tell, depends on whether it's used in the second House of March, but anyway. The, uh, if you, if the tax rate exceeds the voter approval rate, that has to be determined at an election call for during a regular session of Commissioners Court. The tax rate has to be, the hearing may not be held before the fifth day after the date notice is given, or required to adopt the rate by September 30th. You may move to adopt, may vote to adopt the tax rate at the public hearing, but if not, must vote not later than the seventh day after. The hearing, State Bill Two, requires that such a vote occur seventy-one days prior to uniform election date. However, does not supersede election code, which requires ordering an election seventy-eight days before the uniform date. And basically, when you throw all of those numbers in a blender and come, come up with it for 2020, the only date that satisfies every single one of those requirements is August 17th. August 17th is a Monday, and we generally meet on Mondays, but on the dates that were selected, the second and fourth Mondays, when you adopted the rules on August 12th, 2019, the 17th is not one of those two. So...
That's the, that's the third.
Right.
Third Monday.
It's the third Monday. Now, the Office of Court Administration has issued a ruling that the intent of the legislature was, sorry, not Office of Court Administration. Mary Cunningham, uh, she is the judicial program manager at TAC. They, there has been a ruling issued that the legislative intent of having this done at a regularly scheduled meeting was so that the public would have sufficient notice. They have determined that at least three months posting notice is sufficient notice that it is a regularly scheduled meeting. We're about three months out from August 17th. So if it is going to be a regularly scheduled meeting, we got to say that now. So all of that to say, I have recommended that we publish a list, um, for the balance of the year, the dates, and then the auditor's office has asked that we throw in August 24th and September 21st. And everyone has the list, I'm happy with the number, can you read it?
No, sure. So these are totally outside of any other meetings we have, these are, this will just be a regularly scheduled meeting?
These are just regularly scheduled meetings, and if for some reason you don't need dates, you don't show up, you don't have a forum, you don't have a meeting.
So what do you need us to adopt today? So what do you need us to adopt today specifically?
Just adopt that these are, um, just a statement from the court saying that these are irregularly scheduled meetings for the balance of the year, we will then post them on our website, and we will be in compliance with all of those requirements.
Okay, they're not necessarily meeting like first and third, these are just gonna be a list of the days of regular meetings, that don't follow, people are like, one, this is about this, and September's gonna be on, third week.
Third and fourth.
Third week, and, uh, it's the last three weeks of the month, September, so you don't do the first. Well, the first day, actually, Labor Day, maybe that's what you made.
Fourteenth, 21st, and 28th.
The 7th, 21st, 21st, and 3rd.
October, there's the 5th, which is the first week and the third week, so we're, we're kinda not, we're not following any particular, part of the third week's orders, we following this schedule.
Oh, I'm second and fourth.
Second and fourth?
Second and fourth.
Well, we know you got a lot front of you.
Your question is, you follow the schedule?
We're gonna follow this schedule, not like certain...
Not like the second and fourth.
Okay, I understand.
On August 12th, 2019, you said the second and fourth. This list includes the second and fourth, except when those fall on a holiday.
Okay, instead of doing just certain like first and third days, third weeks of the month, we're gonna start having a pre-depots or set up schedule.
And that puts us in compliance?
Those will be regularly scheduled meetings.
They'll follow every, every day of the month, but maybe just weeks and months.
We will probably be continuing weekly, but these dates will be the regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay, all right, and again, that, that will put us in compliance with the state and the OCA.
That, that will put us in compliance with State Bill Two.
Okay.
I don't, Amy, I don't see December on here, I go through, number 23, heavy.
Uh, December 14th.
Need to add December 14th?
Yes.
Let's all on one day.
December 14th and 28th were on, oh, no, okay.
So everybody can hear you on camera, what would tell us the dates, December what?
December 14th and December 28th would be the four, but I...
You can change the 28th, I mean, we're changing the rest of them, so it doesn't really matter, it doesn't have to be the second and the fourth, you know, like the second, or whatever.
Let's go with the second and third.
Okay.
That'd be the 14th and, uh...
On 28th.
Will that work?
The other question I have is, uh, is Brown County scheduled to, uh, change their, change our, uh, revenue cap this year, or are we exempted until the 20th, the next, next, uh, budget cycle? I believe, I don't mind, I think it's a good thing that we go ahead and use these dates, but I don't think that we are, uh, required to go to the three and a half percent cap, I think eight percent is still...
Can I ask that question specifically? She makes, there's a small...
I'm sure y'all couldn't hear that, Chief.
First, first they said we were not.
First they said we were not, and now they're saying that all can be turned into a majority.
That's our auditor advising us that we are required to, uh, to read that, so, thank you.
And because of the discussions, I specifically asked questions, it was specific.
And that's fine, like I said, the post I, when I read it first, that we were exempted from this year.
Right, no, yes, you're correct, at first that's what it sounded like, and then they've had some time to, you know, just like with all the COVID stuff, they're passing, so now it's two years.
Like I said, I, I do think it's, even if we are, were exempted, I think it's good to follow these dates right now to get used to, so.
All right, I'll make a motion, we adopt these dates listed plus the addition of the December 14th to December 21st.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? As always, Amy, awesome job. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
14th, 21st, is that correct?
That's what they said.
Uh, okay, item number seven C is, uh, consideration for possible approval, in action approval of listing the Dodge Charger, uh, surplus sale on, uh, fair action. Well, it was not a full, uh, Chief Creed, you wanna tell us why we need to, where that, the status of that car is, and what's going on?
Who owns this car?
Sheriff. He doesn't want it.
I understand, yeah.
It's got, well, he's gonna tell you, nobody wants it, uh, it's really for scrap, the engine's gone, and then...
You'd like you went to proceeds from sale, any? Sheriff's office?
Yes, they go back to the sheriff's office. Okay. They, he asks if the proceeds, where they go from selling the car, they will go back to the sheriff who, who purchased out of his budget.
Yes, sir.
So Dave, uh, just tell them real quick where the car is at, why you're recommending it.
The car is currently on, uh, on, my name is, uh, Highway, at, uh, the, uh, place that we used to get them set up, configured, get the equipment.
He's telling about Troy Carroll's.
Troy Carroll, yeah.
I don't know it has a name, but...
I, yeah, I was trying to think the name, anyway, out there at Troy Carroll's garage, he has, uh, pulled all the stickers off, uh, all the equipment, uh, which is, uh, required by the state before, uh, selling, uh, surplus, uh, letting it go. Once we get rid of it, uh, they cannot have anything on it that even remotely looks like public safety. Uh, that has been accomplished, uh, I was, prior to doing this, uh, I drove the car several times, and, uh, the, I was really concerned I was gonna get back, the engine, it just, it sounded me like it was fixed and baked out, I pulled it into...
How many miles did it have, sir?
I wanna say it's over 160,000.
You had a lot of cam check trouble on those cars, didn't you?
Uh, those, those Chargers are notorious for problems, uh, they're all plastic, uh, but I, I pulled it in and had a fellow take a look at it, he said that he expects if we were to elect to replace the engine and the transmission with used parts, he wouldn't recommend putting anything new in it, it would still probably be over $2,400 to do it, and he couldn't guarantee it, so, uh, but when I drove it out to Troy's, I really wasn't sure if we were gonna get it to the hill or not, uh, it, it took me, well, it wouldn't do over 30 miles an hour, it wouldn't shift, so...
When I, when I was a police chief, we called those Rolls and Harleys, Rolls down one hill, and Harley, good afternoon.
Right.
This, this one, Troy's home, he said, yeah, just leave it outside the gate, and I'll, I'll pull it in, you bet.
Well, most of them...
Enough information on that, we knew it was a disjunct legal.
Well, I think, I think the procedure is we have to clear surface.
Do it that way, okay?
And, yeah, and the, uh, the way it's listed on the agenda item here, uh, I'd have to have somebody, somebody else tell me if it's all right. It says surplus, but the, the way we have to do things, I believe, is we have to declare surplus, and then we can put it on, on for sale.
Okay.
Yeah, um, if you could get a hold of Shane or Terry to tell us that this agenda item would cover both things, I'd, I'd certainly be for it.
You wanna table it for a few minutes while I send somebody to try to find Shane or Terry, is that all right?
Pass it for a few minutes, yes.
Okay, we'll pass it for a few minutes and come back to it, uh, who's out there that could talk upstairs for me? Bob, you're, yeah, I think you'd be back before you speak, Bob, I think Amy's going, all right. All right, number seven D, we'll come back to seven C, seven D is a consideration possible approval to go and get bids or quotes, uh, it says bids, but, uh, for a, uh, installation sign on the front of the courthouse, and this, I wanted, I wanted to get everybody involved, because you can see I've replanted grass out front, we're trying to make, beautify the courthouse a little bit, thanks to Commissioner Kelton's crew, I believe it's who it was, we got rid of all those bushes and all last year.
We worked several times out on what we did.
Anyway, uh, we're the, we're the memorial monuments, we're, which are now out at the Memorial Park, I would like to, uh, uh, use existing funds, uh, that's already in there, and all I'm asking for now is, is I want everybody to vote to go out and get a couple of quotes, uh, for a, a marble, uh, what I envision is something kind of in the shape of the Alamo, obviously not the Alamo, or so, with the state seal on top, and then Brown County, and then the year, and then we'll get it lit up to where it gets real nice, or the year the county was founded and all, so, uh, we were organized in 1856, but I'm not sure what year we were actually, so I'll have a date, we're a long, long way away from ordering the sign, I just want everybody involved, uh, the platform is perfect to, to put it there, uh, so if, if y'all would like, that's what I'm asking, everybody involved, I'll go to everybody from around and get the best prices they can and bring them back to you.
Well, I would be interested to see what it would cost, but...
Certainly, that's what I am...
Going out looking into this.
That's all the action item is, is I just wanted everybody to be involved.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve you to go out for bids, and I'd like to see what you're talking about, too.
Sure, sure, we'll submit an artist rendition, each one of them.
And the money's in the budget?
It is.
But, I mean, that's, this is just to get bids.
This is just to get bids, we're not buying here.
So maybe, I have no clue.
I don't either, I'm totally expecting it to be around 1,500 or 2,000, but...
I don't have a clue.
I don't, that's, that's, that's what everybody tells me. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, uh, for me to bring y'all prices.
Just to get an idea what it costs, I guess.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I know y'all wanna get out of here. Uh, all in favor? Wow, I'm reading like an auctioneer up here, so, all right, it passes unanimously, uh, that was D, all right, seven, uh, seven F, oh, we're on E, I'm sorry, uh, seven E, consideration approval of upgrades to, uh, the security installations, all right, this one's something we've been working on for a very long time, as you know, uh, to make our front, uh, uh, security entrance more, uh, safe, uh, for all our visitors, for all our employees, everyone, uh, and we, we had for the longest time trouble getting anybody that would even, a carpenter that would even come and give us a quote, nobody was, nobody wanted to do the job because it was too small for them, too small a job, so the, the deputy submitted the artist rendition that you have, and asked me to explain to you what exactly, and this money also, uh, is in the budget, we already, not asking, we're not asking for a single dime more than what we already have.
Okay, I saw this, I saw this this morning, I wanted to ask how the bids...
Yeah.
Yeah, but I've got most, yeah, I've come...
Who wants to look? Okay, uh, so we want, on the table is, all right, no problem with that.
No, I thought we all had a little vision of the cabinet.
Well, I couldn't get anybody, I called everybody on the page, and I called everyone I could possibly think of, this, this fellow though, that, that submitted the quote that you have.
He's the one that did the...
He did the district report, yeah, so you know what, a lot of his work, right?
No, this is definitely, this is, right.
Right, but he's the one that did the district report, so...
Okay, so we're gonna pass on E?
We're gonna pass on E. And, uh, again, if you can get somebody else out, if you're...
He's coming tomorrow, tomorrow.
That would be awesome, we're gonna do it next week. Uh, the reason why the price is the way it is, by the way, from the first minute, and I wanna make y'all all understand, I make, I wanna make sure, I, God, we have a ton of time in this mess, make sure everybody understands what we're looking at, as, now, if somebody attacked in front of the courthouse like they did in Tyler a few years back, uh, our deputies have to go into the old treasurer's office, then into the safe, in order to get their law rifles, to, to be able to prevent them from getting into the courthouse or any further. This would actually have a safe under the, under the cabinet built in, where they hit a release and it, it opens, and they have access to the weapons that they need to, to repel, there would be no more running into the office and twisting the combination of the balls to get shot in the back, yeah, while everybody's outside being, being attacked, so. All right, so we'll table, uh, seven E, seven F, uh, consideration possible of any action warranted regarding the property insurance through Texas Association of Counties. I didn't see any changes need to be made, I just, I wanted, again, to get everybody involved before I tell them, it'll automatically renew as it is unless y'all tell me you want something changed. I think it's a great policy, I don't see that we need to change it.
Yeah, whatever, you think it would be better than that?
No, TAC always offers this.
Ma'am?
TAC always offers this.
I think we've been through this before, and it's...
I believe so, yeah, not a thing will change, uh, but it, but I just wanna make sure you didn't have anything you wanted to change, I didn't wanna tell them, go ahead and tell you guys, have had a chance to look at it.
I make a motion, or is that, no, we don't need action, is that an action?
Uh, if we do nothing, it'll automatically renew, but if you, you can make them, you can approve renewing in a few more...
I make a motion, we renew our property liability insurance, too, also, right? With, uh, through Texas Association of Counties.
I'll look at that. So we have a motion and a second, are any further discussion? All in favor? It passes unanimously, thank you. It was a long, we don't usually have these long meetings. Next one is, uh, Commissioner Worley, uh, consideration possible approval of an equipment purchase.
I need to make a quick trip upstairs while you're doing that, because I need my paperwork for my...
She gave a... I have two international haul trucks, a 2012 and a 2013, and one of them, I can't remember exactly which one, has been giving trouble almost since the day we had it, spent quite a bit of money on it, but, uh, anyway, I found, uh, another one to replace it, it's a 2004 Kenworth, day cab, with a 10-speed manual transmission, 550 horsepower catatolar engine, 373 Merian, and, uh, 24 and a half inch tires, it's got, uh, 335,000, 190 miles on it.
That's not a lot.
That's not much on a decent engine.
Biggest class-like truck.
Anyway, the price is 42,000, and, um, I'd like permission to, uh, buy this Kenworth, uh, truck. I move that, uh, court allow me to buy this Kenworth truck to replace one of the others at, uh, 42,000.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? And I just wanna clarify that the money's in the budget already for this, I know it is right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that, he's not asking for any additional money outside of what's already on the budget.
It'll come out of precinct one funds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? It passes, and we should kill it. Uh, so, uh, item number seven H is, uh, Commissioner Kelton, precinct two, consideration possible approval of action regarding burn ban.
Well, there's a possibility of rain tonight, but I think, I understand, we gotta, I, I know that all the fire departments are, are asking.
Well, and I want to tell you that the fire chief actually wanted to be here today for Brownwood to, to speak against asking to have a, speak for having it reinstated, but he couldn't be here.
Well, I've got a text from Steve Adams, and he has talked to all of the volunteer fire departments, including Groundwood, and they're all asking for a burn ban, so, uh, do you have paper for a burn ban, Joe?
No, I did not bring anything to do with a burn ban, but I would vote to, I guess I would vote for reinstated burn ban.
We'd have to declare it, I think.
Well, the conditions exist, I don't know what the fire, what the board said, or anything there.
Since we passed on it so many times, I, I don't think the information to adopt it was in the package, but if we adopt it here today, I'll give you...
Um, I think I'm, I've got it, yeah.
We have to consider, we have to, uh, the condition, the general, the county law, whatever it is.
Anyway, it's, uh, order of the court, uh, full time.
I believe I can just step up.
Yeah. Here, here, no, that's outdoor burning, well, that's the burn. All right, whereas the commissioner's court finds that circumstances present in all are part of the unincorporated area of the county created public safety hazard that would be exasperated by outdoor burning, it is hereby ordered by the commissioner's court of Brown County that all outdoor burning is prohibited... that all outdoor burning is prohibited in the unincorporated area of the county for 90 days from date of adoption of this order, unless the restrictions are terminated earlier based on a determination made, made by Texas Forest Service or this court based on a determination that the circumstances that required the order no longer exist. This order is adopted pursuant to local government code 352.081 and other applicable statutes. This order does not prohibit outdoor burning activities related to public health and safety that are authorized by the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, firefighter training, public utility, natural gas pipeline, or mining operations, planting or harvesting, or agricultural crop problems, or burns that are conducted by a prescribed burn manager certified under 153.048 Natural Resources Code and meet the standards of 153.047 Natural Resources Code. In accordance with local government code 352.081, a violation of this order is a Class C misdemeanor punishable by a fine not to exceed 500. And this will be adopted this, what's the day? 11th day of, of 2020 by vote of. Now, when it comes up.
Got you. I got this one ready to sign. I didn't have time to keep yours.
No, that's fine.
Uh, thank you very much. And I will, well, I'm sorry, the burn manager.
Well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, apparently every fire department is asking for this, so. I'm always kind of reluctant to, we have to do it.
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion, I guess we do reinstated burn ban.
Adopt the order preventing outdoor burning.
Yeah, per se, this here, the order he just read out to you.
Okay, so Mr. Worley read the order into the record. We have a motion by Commissioner Kelton to adopt.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Shaw. So any further discussion? All right, this will be for 90 days unless you rescind it before then. It will automatically expire or we can extend it, whichever one you like. So all in favor? Carries unanimously. Sharon, you and I have to sign this, so.
There's my signature for you.
I'm sure you know it by now. Looks like chicken scratching. All right, item number seven H. Consider, no, that was seven H. Item number seven I. Consideration is also Commissioner Kelton. Due to COVID-19 outbreak, the daily changing needs that may arise, all discussion reports concerning needs and response of the county's needs to take regarding the COVID-19 outbreak. So we have, always, always, Lisa's here from the health department to speak to us and tell us what the current status is. We don't usually get results over the weekend, but sometimes we do. I didn't see anything from you from this.
Yes, Sharon, I will. So over the weekend, we did receive a few results that came in this morning. Just, they were all negative, there were five, so we don't have any additional cases. We're still at 38. And, and so we're holding our own for right now. And tomorrow, we will have to drive, drive in testing. And so I think that appointments are available and there is a number that you can call.
I'm going to announce it.
Great, great. And then I know it's also posted on the city's website right now. So hopefully we'll have some people come through and do testing. And that will give us kind of a clearer picture of what's going on in our community.
We're also going to put it on the county website. An emergency management has a, has a lot of followers on Facebook. We'll put it on there as well. Questions for Lisa?
Nearly every time they start doing this testing like that, sometimes they get a rise in the number of cases.
Sure.
Because of the volume of testing they're doing.
Yes.
So they may cause a rise, but that may not have, should not cause alarm, maybe you're right.
So I will continue to follow the same procedure where we ask that anybody that's positive to self-isolate and work with them and family and contacts to make sure that we can keep that situation under control.
And for the record, and for everybody watching and everybody in the audience, 38 is the number?
38 is the number.
And of those, only five were community spread, correct?
Well, they were out in the community. And then there could have been different, there were different sources where they needed to travel.
And those were, I remember, it's been a long time since those, those were. The point I'm trying to make is, other than the facility that was unfortunately affected by this, we haven't had anyone in the community test positive since early March?
Since, I think it was that different part of April.
Okay.
And then the rest of it is, we do still have people that could interact with the community because some of those are employees. So we do want to continue to be safe. And we still want to make sure that we're using social distancing and protecting others, which is the main, the main reason why we wear masks is to protect other people. So just to remind her of that.
I'm sure, I hope that those employees that were there had enough sense to social distance and quarantine themselves after they found out.
Yes, and we've been working with them on that.
Since we last met, we, if you can hang for a second, Lisa.
Sure.
We've had some national media attention because of the number of unfortunate deaths that we had out of that facility. That all, so we addressed that, the mayor and I did this past week. And since then, I think that they gave them all the answers they want. It's extraordinarily unfortunate, but again, as the mayor and I said, so if all of y'all, in case you didn't catch it on the news, the, the facility has done, in my, in our eyes, everything they possibly could. They've sanitized and sterilized and they've got those who are positive in a separate unit within the building. People ask me, how come is the emergency management director, you didn't close it down? Well, they're getting the best care that they could get there or anywhere. And they're right across the street from the emergency room, heaven forbid if something happens. And on top of that, where would we move them? When you test positive, no other facility is, is going to take them. Now, any family member can go in, or a family that, that has a, a permission and authority can go in and remove. It's not like they're in jail there. They can take them out, take them home if they want, they can do anything, but they're getting. Lisa, if you support what I'm saying here, they're getting the best care.
They are, and, and so anybody that would leave that facility if they, if some of their family members came and took them, then that person and their family would be under isolation for 14 days.
And I'm not promoting that, I'm just saying, it's, it's not like they're under an order to stay there. They can go as they want, so.
And so we would have to help facilitate that and we would be glad to, but I can agree that everyone there is receiving the, the care, the best situation and the best care that they can under the situation.
And to conclude, commissioners, to let you know, the state has been there, the licensing authority, they've done inspection. They're doing everything they can to help them make sure they're operating in accordance with CDC guidelines. There's just really nothing more that Lisa's department or the county or the city could be doing. We're doing everything we possibly can. But this is delighted if you have any questions for us.
That's what, up in New York, that's where they send people to get the nursing.
Anyone have any questions for Lisa?
I appreciate you coming.
Thank you, ma'am.
The, the testing site for all, people have to exhibit symptoms, right? Before they can be tested. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, I don't think they, they regulate it as strict as Lisa knows, but that's right. And, and that's good, thank you, Commissioner Worley. I'll lead into that, that's a good transition. That was, that, that organization coming tomorrow to give mobile testing. They'll be back later in the week, too, for a second date because we're expecting, we're hoping for a large turnout. The, that is run by the National Guard. We don't have anything to do with it other than to schedule the date. So they, they determine their own testing criteria and all, and, and literally it's funded, run by the National Guard, and they use their own test kits, so it won't affect our inventory of tests. So yes, you have to, you have to have some symptoms. I don't know, I don't, from what I'm told, they're not nearly as strict as they are from the health department when y'all test because you have such limited tests.
Well, and I think that the, and that's one of the things that's hard is that, and not that the criteria changes, but the guidelines have changed. And so as more tests are available, then those guidelines are able to be a little bit less strict. It also has to do with which lab they're processing those through. And so we have to go by those guidelines for the, the region lab that we go through in Tarrant County. And so whenever we have anything that we think needs to deviate from that, then we call and talk, and talk to them about it. And with their approval, we can deviate from those stricter standards. But they, you do have to have symptoms and before they will test you.
And of course, we, we're trying to be as transparent as possible. Tell the commissioner, if you don't mind, how many test kits you have available right now?
I think we have around 140 that we have in our possession. And then, and that may be a little bit off because when we use those, then sometimes we get more. And then also the hospital has accessible.
And that's where, that's where I was going next. The hospital keeps their own separate supply.
Yes, yes.
If I can, Dave, I had forgot you. If I can read the number here for everybody in the audience and everyone watching. If you would like to be tested tomorrow and you meet the, the criteria set by the National Guard, the number is 512-883-2400. Again, 512-883-2400. You do have to have an appointment to get tested, but it usually moves very fast. It's set up to be like a drive-through, but you got to stop and get your order, I guess. So you cannot just get in line. You have to have a time reserve. If it fills up, because they told us 100 is the maximum they can do, they'll come back on a day, like, hopefully, I anticipate this weekend, perhaps the day, Saturday or Sunday. Oh, 23? Yeah.
Yes, sir. I've got a confirmed date, 16th, for the second test date. Also, when these folks make this phone call to get registered, if they are able to get registered, they need to keep in mind that at some point in the, in pretty quick proximity, they're going to get a telephone back from the state. And when that phone call comes in, they need to answer it so that they can confirm that they do in fact want that time and date that they've got. If they do not answer the confirmation phone call, they'll be dropped from the queue and they'll have to re-register.
Thank you for your phone call, Ann.
Yeah, if the phone rings and you don't recognize it, it'll probably be a 512 number, but if you don't recognize it, you probably want to go ahead and answer. Again, somebody out there asked for it to be repeated. It's 512-883-2400. Dave, did you, is your question involved, Lisa, or?
Uh, just a comment, John. Uh, and I'm not contradicting anything that anyone said. Last week, I went to Comanche, it was tested over there, run by the guard. They did a really, really good job. But when I registered, they did not require me to have all much symptoms. I mean, I think I had maybe two symptoms and they said that was fine, so. But Lisa, I'm sure she's got updated information. That's all I was, was going to say.
Okay, thank you.
So what are the chances they're going to get overwhelmed? Do you think it's very, that they'll get, exceed that number for, or you don't know?
I, I have no idea. I don't think that they have been overwhelmed other places. So, but we would want as many people to go through and get tested as we can. And we do have to have some symptoms. And I think that we're seeing a little bit less or fewer people that are coming into doctor's appointments and calling us that have symptoms, so.
And again, to, to remind the court and the audience, it's likely that our number, our positives will go up because the more people you test, the more positives you get. Also, the more negatives we're going to get. We keep track of both. But don't be alarmed if that happens, so. If some people, someone may be asymptomatic, but their children aren't. They go ahead and test the parent, and then you've got four positive out of that house. That could happen, even though they had no symptoms. So, but that's, you know, I just don't want anybody to become frightened. The fear in, in all, in situations like this does far more damage than the actual virus does. So, you have more questions for Lisa? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information.
Item number seven J is Commissioner Kelton. Consideration of possible approval of action needed in, oh, I'm sorry. That's, we didn't have any action there, moving on. All right, so consideration of possible action to install a private line on County Road 417 in Zephyr. Again, this is item number seven K.
Mate, Zephyr Water Supply wants to put a water line across the road on County Road 417. It's a, it's a Fleecy Road, they want to do a cut. I, I make a motion, we allow them to do this, done to county specifications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I'll just say, whatever y'all recommend, we've got my support. So all in favor? Carries unanimously.
There's a big work, we just got to get a signature on it. At least I don't have that.
These suggestions to sign, this is right here.
What do you want to do?
Is there a mud cut or anything?
Yeah, a mud cut on Fleecy Road. Per of the county specifications.
Okay, item number, and I know we've got a couple to come back to. Item, he has it right. Item number seven L is Mr. Contreras, our grants coordinator, to come and speak to you about what, and tell the public occasionally what, what his office is doing.
Well, I was wondering, good morning, gentlemen. I have some grant update. About a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago, Commissioner Kelton brought some concerns about the May water system up. Whenever the, we have issues like storms, they lose power, the power unit doesn't have water, but there's no water. They can't deploy fire trucks, the school sometimes lets out. So it's, it's a big issue. So we put in a grant about 13 or 14 months ago for a backup generator, and the grant was approved. And we're going to get a 35 KW liquid cooled aluminum generator. It's going to come with a 500 gallon propane tank. Now, we're going to have an electric control board and all, all the doodads. It's $27,356. We'll be getting an award letter shortly. I just got an electronic notification the other day. The county's share will be $6,839. And we'll see if we can do that in kind or not. And Commissioner Shaw's precinct.
Well, can I back up to that? Because we talked about this prior to that. If we can't do an in-kind thing, like water supply, there has to be a cash. And we agreed we'd, we'd come up with the massive part of the agreement. If it's in-kind, I'd like to be able to do it.
You'll get, you'll get an answer on that as soon as you can.
So 21,000 would be the grant, would cover everything, but with just 6,839.
You're going to give him an answer, give us an answer?
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Yes.
I just want to say we're, we're trying not to, no expense, should be any cash expense to the county. We appreciate it very much, by the way.
Commissioner Shaw, January 29th last year, was very concerned about a low water crossing. So we put that in there. The same fellow that signed this is going to sign that, hopefully. We still won't have it signed, but they said we can look for an answer shortly. That's a $214,674 grant. The county's share is 53,666, and that will be able to be paid in kind.
Also, that's what the other precincts, we're going to allow them to use some of that project to overlay that in-kind spend. I just happen to have a precinct.
For the Economic Development Administration, it's a $3.6 million grant to fix about five miles of road in every precinct. Our share of that grant, if it's awarded, then it will be in general, will be $720,000. This, so, so that means we're going to get $2,880,000 cash and $700,000 of our contribution, just round things.
Do we have to? We can't do in-kind work for that?
Well, with this particular, I'm glad you asked. With this particular grant, when I had made the initial application, they came back and there was a huge number of $507 million, but it was for the whole United States.
Yeah.
And then it was broken up by state. And so these are all competitive grants. So we're competing with other people to see who needs it the most. So after my first application, I got word back that said it looks good, what we, what we submitted. But for us to be competitive with counties that are maybe poorer than us or serve more people, to make ourselves more competitive, we went from $7 million down to 3.6 million. And then for our part of the grant, they wanted us, they said if you offer a cash payment rather than in kind, your chances of getting the grant will be much, much greater. So that's where we got to where we are here with a $3.6 million grant. So 202.88 million dollars to us, and our share would be $720,000. Now, that's not been awarded yet. It'll get awarded in June, but I just wanted to let you all know. And then Commissioner Worley passed down through the judge, a Texas infrastructure grant. And this is a grant based on oil activity in the county. So the max we're eligible for is a $202,500 grant. Our, our, their share of it will be $162,000. So that will be $40,500 if it's approved. And we will be able to use in-kind labor on that. So that, that's pending, that's not been approved. And the EDA grant also has not been approved, but these are pending. Just wanted to bring you up to date on those. Any questions?
Okay, questions involved? And that's not an action item, so.
Okay.
Thanks for that. All right, we need to go back up to, did anybody get an answer from the county attorney's office?
I think what Commissioner Worley told us, it should have been two items. One for clarity and one for, but they have not been noticed.
Right, but somebody was going to ask Shane if we could do it off this. If not, we'll just repost it next week.
Neither attorney is available.
Neither one, okay, I suggest that I just repost it.
Yeah, well, that's, I put it back on the agenda like that, and that, that's probably Johnny every time, right?
Two options, yeah. All right, we'll get that sent for you, uh, for next Monday. I'm sorry?
I will fix it.
Okay, no problem. Uh, so then the only thing I see on here, y'all court, this is a long, this was a long agenda, is that we need to go back to paying those bills? Do we want to wait on Commissioner Kelton, send him here right back, or do we want to move forward? By the way, for the record, Commissioner Kelton, he used himself for a few minutes, but he did say he would return. Would y'all like to, y'all want to go and read, take this time and read them?
I move we approve the bills as presented by the auditor.
It's like an option. If you guys are like an option. We'll give you a little flag, you know? All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? So it passes by a vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Kelton, uh, not being here to vote. Uh, do y'all see anything on here that I forgot? Help me out, I want, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything, it was a very long agenda, we had to move around. All right, uh, with that being said, then, uh, we want to meet, uh, the next Monday's, uh.
Where's the library?
Memorial, yeah. Okay, so we meet next Monday, the 25th, though, guys, I need you to be thinking about, if we, I would rather, I want us to meet every week because of COVID, so I would like to meet the Su, Tuesday morning, Monday's a holiday.
Next Monday is 18th, it's.
Right, that's right, I've talked about, I'm giving the advance notice of the 25th.
26th, maybe next.
We can meet on the 26th rather than the 25th, uh, 25th is a holiday.
We're not going to meet on that date.
Well, yeah, we, we need, no, yeah, so, so we'll meet, we'll meet next Monday, the 18th, that's no problem, but I, I'm trying to give you advance notice that, that two weeks from now is going to be a holiday, and I'd like to meet on a Tuesday, I know y'all work out in your precincts, so.